I'm sure everybody needed, it's just something to give us some, some joy, some peace. At the end of this day, um, I'm gonna open up with prayer. Father God, we thank you for this hour that you have given us, hour and a half, God, but we ask, Lord, that you just be in here, Lord, that you increase within me and I decrease, God. Not only me, but everyone in here increase within them, God. We thank you for the word that you've given us on this evening. We ask, Lord, that this word continue to empower our lives so that we might live and, and follow what you would have us to do, God. That we be those examples of men and women that you have called us to be, God. We thank you for this evening, God, and we just ask you, Lord, to be in this prayer, uh, service. Lord, we ask that everything that somebody has received, let them share, God, because you give to us all a little bit differently. Let them be open about the word on tonight, and we just thank you and praise you in Jesus' mighty name, amen. The title, "The Kingdom of God for the Believers." Our background readings are Luke nine and two. Luke nine and two. Luke ten, seven through twelve. Luke ten, seven through twelve. Luke seventeen, twenty through twenty-five. Luke seventeen, twenty through twenty-five. Matthew six, nine through ten. Matthew six, nine through ten. Mark one, fourteen through fifteen. Mark one, fourteen through fifteen. Acts eight, verse twelve. Acts eight, verse twelve. Hebrews twelve, verse twenty-eight. Hebrews twelve, verse twenty-eight. Our devotional reading is coming from Matthew six, twenty-five through thirty-four. Matthew six, twenty-five through thirty-four. Could I get somebody to get Luke nine and two, read it, and give a little insight, please?
I'll read it, but I'm gonna read one, two before.
Okay, that's fine.
It says, "Then he called his twelve disciples together and gave them power and authority over all devils and to cure diseases, and he sent them to preach the kingdom of God and to heal the sick." Well, he sent them out to, it's pretty self-explanatory. He sent them out to pray for people and...
Do you hear them? Anybody else have anything?
He gave his disciples the authority to use the power.
Yes, and like it says in the, um, the scripture here, it says that he sent them to preach. He preached, uh, sent them to heal. So those were two things that we know that he's given us to do. You know, we, as believers, his spirit empowers us, uh, to, to do those things, to, to minister to other folks. We may, we may not be standing on the pulpit, but we, we minister to people when they come and talk to us. It's not like the, the ministers or the elders or pastor or the bishops ministering to you, but it, ours comes from life experiences and our, uh, from the spirit filling us with whatever it is to give, 'cause sometimes he gives us stuff that, you know, like when somebody comes up to us or comes in our presence to give to them, and we don't even realize, you know, some of the things that we've said that has encouraged somebody to heal them. 'Cause just praying for somebody sometimes helps a person, and it puts them on a different track. I've seen that, and the prayer was simple, as simple could be, and that person was a little bit different the next day. I know for me, it happened like that. It happened like that. Um, anybody else?
Also, wow, that's loud. Um, also at this time, we gotta remember there's no New Testament, so them, by their virtue of going out and spreading the word and healing the sick, they were doing miracles to draw people in so that they could share the message of Jesus Christ and the message of the kingdom. So even at that time, the New Testament didn't exist, so they literally had to go out and tell people about Jesus ministry, about the, the second come, or about, you know, his ministry and what he was doing. So that's also something that we're charged to do, is to go out and spread the word.
With you saying, with you saying that, I just thought about, um, like, um, they heard him. They heard him proclaiming. They heard him proclaim, so, and they watched him heal. So, and then when he told them that they could go out and for them to do the same thing, like, uh, Mother said, he gave them the power and authority at that point to do that. We receive it when we receive Christ. If we believe that we've received it, we believe, we receive that power and that authority. I remember Pastor saying to me this thing over and over again. He gives us the supernatural power and authority to call us to do what it is that he has us to do, unrestricted, unrestricted, supernatural power and authority to do what he's called us to do. And, and we gotta believe that. Some of us don't believe it, some of us are slow. We, like, I know I was slow, and I'll be honest, I drug my foot, my feet about doing stuff, you know, 'cause I wasn't sure of myself. But he chose us. He already qualified us. All we had to do is believe that and step into it.
And there's a lot of pagan gods at this time, um, and we remember in the Bible, there's a lot of people that showed up just because of the signs. And, you know, and then Jesus himself said, you know, you guys are here because of the signs, but, you know, you, believe the signs or believe my work, you know, the things that I'm telling you, believe what I, what I've done. If you can't believe what I say, believe what I've done and believe in that power. So even with that, with him sending them out to do those miracles and things, that was another confirmation of, go out and do these things and draw the crowds, and then once you have them, preach the word and change and convert.
I love it when we got all these people sitting in here like that, because that's something that we have probably totally forgotten about, that, you know, because we know there's a story in here where there's was a sorcerer that believed him and went on, and, and he finally gave himself to God too, but he only wanted that power. He only wanted that, and I sometimes forget those things, but thank you for reminding us. Um, Betty, you have something?
I just wanted to say that... I don't even know if I should say that. But, um, I think, uh, what we should discuss today is, uh, the kingdom of God. What is the definition of the kingdom of God? Because, um, what I'm finding out is the kingdom of God is, uh, nothing that we can see. God is invisible. So then this kingdom has to be invisible. And where is his kingdom? Yeah, it's in the heart, and, uh, it's inside of us, and the kingdom of God is nothing tangible. So it's, to me, uh, the kingdom of God is love, and it's, it's around the single, and the only way that you can become a part of his kingdom is connect into the source, which is God, and he is invisible, it's a spiritual realm. And that's what we're, we're trying to do, we're trying to crucify this, this man, this physical man, and all of his lust and all of his sin, and we're trying to parent ourselves after what Jesus is, what God wants us to be, as a spiritual person. And that's what we're trying to align our body. We can't crucify that human physically.
Thank you, Betty, for sharing that. Anybody else before we move on?
Uh, it's really is, I understand what she's saying, this is like a realm, a realm of God, the sovereignty, and Jesus, where Jesus is. So it is like, it's inside of you, like, like you said, it's invisible. And the kingdom of God is joy, peace, love, you know?
At this point, though, Jesus hasn't died, so his spirit isn't within these guys. They were being taught the lesson. That's what was going on. They were being taught by him, they watched him, and, you know, they pretty much believed him, or they wouldn't be following him. The, like he said, it wasn't, it was like, it's the New Testament, so when he does die, he's preparing them to receive this. What's he doing?
Okay. So Mother, Mother Brenda, what you're saying is that as we walk this earth, and we, uh, take our course in, uh, reading the Bible, being prayerful, and letting the spirit of God instruct us, 'cause Jesus sent his spirit back, okay? So we, as the people of God, um, are being instructed and changed.
Correct.
Uh, mind, our mind and our hearts, so that we can follow the things that God has instructed the disciples to do, we can do also.
Correct. Thank you, Elder Nixon.
When Jesus was, uh, he was, he was, um, telling his disciples, and Jesus, when he in the spirit, I mean, he was following God's...
His spirit, his father.
Yeah, he was teaching them how to...
He was doing what his father told him to do.
Yeah, and he was trying to teach his disciples how to follow what he was doing. He was the example, so that when they went out into the world, because Jesus knew where he was going, you know, he knew he was gonna be crucified, and he was gonna leave the Holy Spirit to guide us into all the knowledge. But while he was here, he was teaching his disciples to how to live and how to, yeah, the kingdom of God.
Right.
That's what he was doing.
Right.
Look at it like, you can get a furniture, you have all the pieces, and you have the direction, but the, the piece will never get built unless you use the pieces and you work the directions. The pieces will always be there, and the directions will always exist. That's kind of the word of God. It, it, it's there, everything exists, but it won't come together unless you actually do it and work and put it all together. So that's kind of how I, I'm weird like that, just use analogies.
One of the instructions.
Yeah, you have to use the instructions. The pieces are there, but if you do nothing...
Nothing, yeah.
It still exists, it's still there, but it will never come together unless you use the pieces and the directions, and you use it all, and you go back, and you, you gotta use your wrench, and you gotta slide part A and then slide B.
That's right, yes.
You gotta, and you gotta double check, and you may put it all together, and, and you got something missing, you gotta go back and look at the directions, you might have to tear something apart, you know, it, it, it all comes together when you use the pieces and the directions, but they, they always exist, they're always there, but it's up to us in order to use the components and the instructions to make it all come together.
Uh, you're, you're right, 'cause you opened my eyes to that, that's the man, the word of God, the manual, the Holy Spirit, and the, I like how you put that with the instruction, you know, you have to, 'cause if you're putting something, you really gotta look at it. That, that gave me a clear view. The Bible, that's like the manual. Go ahead.
The, the Bible is the instructions, but the joy and the peace, and that those are the pieces, and those will always be there.
Yes.
Always. But unless we use the instructions, it'll never come together right. It'll, it'll never quite fit the way it's supposed to unless we use the instructions.
That's the icing on the cake.
And then it'll come together and make a perfect piece.
That's the icing on the cake.
But, but just as you said, we have to use it.
Yes.
We have to use it because we'll, we'll read the word of God and see the things that God is putting in place, but we don't use it.
Or if, if you're anything like me, you'll glance over and see the pictures and go, oh, yeah, I can, I'll just, I'll just go and, and instead of actually reading and doing a deep dive into how I'm supposed to do it, what tools I'm supposed to use, what sequence I'm supposed to do it in, and if we don't study that thing and do it the way we're supposed to, again, the pieces are gonna be there, and some of them are gonna fit without even effort. You can just look and say, okay, yeah, this, this goes here, but if we don't read the instructions, it'll never come together the way it's supposed to. And, and if it's something like a chair, it won't be able to support your weight and do the things that it's designed to do.
Yes, yes.
Unless we follow the instructions.
From what I'm, I get from what you're saying, it won't be a foundation.
No, it'll be a false foundation, because it'll be the facade of a sturdy chair. It'll look like a sturdy chair, but it won't behave like a sturdy chair, 'cause once you put your weight in it, once some trials and tribulations come, and you really gotta sit in that thing, it'll, it'll, it'll fall, it'll fail, it'll crumble. But if we read the instructions, use the pieces, it'll come together and it'll hold us. It'll hold us, it'll give us that firm foundation that we need.
That's right. Reese, all of us, Reese, all of us said, read mommy reads.
Somebody get, um, Luke ten, seven through twelve, please, and give us insight.
And remain in the same house, eating and drinking what they provide, where the laborer deserves his wages. Do not go from house to house. Whenever you enter a town and they receive you, eat what is set before you. Heal the sick in it and say to them, "The kingdom of God has come near to you, but whenever you enter a town and they do not receive you, go into its streets and say, 'Even the dust of your town that clings to our feet, we wipe off against you. Nevertheless, know this, that the kingdom of God has come near. I tell you, it will be more bearable on that day for Sodom than for that town.'"
What you get from that, uh, Sharon?
It's just, um... But this is when Jesus has just given, um, the disciples the instructions on... He's giving them the instructions on when they go, letting them know, foresee that you are gonna be received by some, and, you know, when you're there, you know, accept the hospitality, be nice to that, but when you're not, still have that same attitude, still know who you are, know what your mission is, and go on about the mission and not worry about the ones that don't like you or dislike you, um, and still preach his message regardless if they accept you or they don't accept you, you still gotta preach what I'm giving you to preach.
Right. Anybody else?
He was also, it's, like she said, and giving them instruction, he was also telling them, it's like when you go on mission, you don't go from house to house. And the reason why, because sometimes going from house to house, you can get into conversations. When you get in the pulpit that night, the Lord, the spirit of the Lord could reveal something to you, but they would say, "We just talked about that, that, that is not the spirit, that's like," and he didn't want you to be getting in gossip and this thing, and so that's why he says, "Stay in one house, eat there." And that's what something they taught us when we used to go on a mission field, you know those old people? Now, you could do all your towing after you finish your mission, but before that, you stay in the house, you read, you pray, but you, and you don't get in no idle conversation. So that's, this was always something they pointed out, and when he was sending the, the seventy in Matthew, he told them that too.
And also what he said in the scripture is, oh, uh, whatever they offer you to eat, eat it, because oftentimes people come to your house and they'll say, "I don't eat that." But that's not what you came for, okay? That's not your purpose, it's not what they put in front of you, it's what you serve to them. And so, but their servant is not important. If you're hungry, eat.
That's right.
Anybody else before we move on?
I like also how he told them not only to go in one house and stay there, but not everyone's gonna receive you, and he told them that upfront, and he, he told them how to deal with it. Okay, let it roll off your back, just go in the street, knock your dust, keep, knock the dust and keep moving. Um, I, I think that's important for us to remember, not everyone's gonna receive you, not everyone's gonna receive what the Lord gave you to give them, but it's not your word to begin with, so just do your part.
Yes.
And if they don't receive it...
Receive it, that's right.
Shake the dust off and, and keep going, because this is the, this is the mission I have given you, and these things will happen. So when they do, here's what you do, shake it off, move forward.
Right, Sister Betty?
I was thinking the same thing when, because everybody's not, like you said, is going to accept it, and you have to be committed to the mission. You, that's just like when we was talking about last week about why do you go to church? Every church may not be able, you may not get along with everybody in church, or you may not be able to receive where your spirit matches with everyone, but if you're there for the ministry, you there for your purpose, your mission is there, you have to be committed and dedicated and submitted to the ministry.
Right.
To what your purpose is, to win, because they're not gonna receive, and, you know, he tells them back then exactly what to do, but that's so much for us today, because in this world, in our culture, there's a lot of things that goes against your ethics or your values, and you still have to stand up and be like, no, I'm not gonna do that, I'm not gonna have that in, um, in my spirit or around me and be able, you may lose some friends, you may lose family behind that, but you have to stay connected, and it says, you know, where he says, you know, he warns them and lets you know, this is what's gonna happen, so prepare yourself for this, you know? And that's the, um, beauty of being like, um, Elder was saying about the instructions of being in the Bible and having that so that you do have that to fall back on and having, um, emotionally maturity, because your emotions will cause, if they're not mature, will fall back because someone, oh, I'm not listening to you, or I don't like what you're saying, or you can do a little bit of that, and that's having where you have to be spiritually, naturally, and emotionally in that Bible and grounded in it.
Right, Sharon? Yeah. Um, Luke seventeen, twenty through twenty-five?
And when he was demanded of the Pharisees, when the kingdom of God should come, he answered them and said, "The kingdom of God cometh not with observation; neither shall they say, 'Lo here,' or 'Lo there,' for behold, the kingdom of God is within you.'" And he said unto the disciples, "The days will come when ye shall desire to see one of the days of the Son of Man, and he sh- and ye shall not see it. And they shall say to you, 'See here,' or 'See there,' go not after them, or nor follow them; for as lightning that lightens out of one part under heaven shineth, and to the other part under heaven, so shall also the Son of Man be in his day. But first must he suffer many things and be rejected of this generation."
What's that saying, Mother Shirley?
If, if the kingdom of God is within you, you, you know what, what you should be doing and... Uh, I don't, I don't know, I...
Somebody wanna help her out, um?
Well, you know, it's just like, Sister Betty was saying, the kingdom is, everyone's looking for a sign, or they say, "The kingdom of God is coming." It's not an event, it's internal, like we was just speaking earlier, that is internal, it's a spiritual thing, it's nothing that's physically seen, and that's what he was letting them know, um, you're looking for the kingdom of God, and if you have me, the kingdom of God is always amongst his people, it's already, it's already here, it's not something that's going to come, you have it, and it's like she said, with the love, the peace, the kindness and all that, that's all the kingdom of God, and that's in his people.
Right. Anybody else?
Yeah, about that kingdom of God again. Okay, uh, the kingdom of God, a kingdom has to be ruled by a ruler. Our sovereign God rules that kingdom of God. Uh, he has all power, all, all knowledges everywhere, he's, he's, uh, omnipresent. What, what, what else is it, omnipresent?
Omnipresent.
Omnipresent. He, he's got a lot of attributes, but God is, is the, the ruler of this kingdom, and in order for us to stay connected to that kingdom, we have to keep ourselves in alignment with his will and his word, and we have to study and fellowship, it's a way of life.
Right.
And so, uh, once you are so connected to that kingdom, and that's when you are transformed from the inside out, that's what I'm learning. And, uh, when you're being transformed from the inside out, I found out a lot of things about Betty I didn't know, I'm very rebellious, you know, I'm prideful. And so, in order to, to stay connected to the kingdom, as God is my ruler, I have to surrender Betty and all of her problems to him and, and be under subjection so that I can be transformed with the renewing of my mind. I have to keep my mind staying on Jesus, on the Lord, in order for me to stay plugged in to the kingdom.
Right.
That's what I'm learning.
You're so right, Betty. Anybody else before we move on?
And I like how he, he said, you know, and what I got from it was, the things I'm teaching you will last forever, and I'm only gonna be here for a little while. We think of how long the earth, dinosaurs, millions of years, and he was here for thirty-three years. So when I see that, we talked about the law, we'll only be here as the lightning is, which is milliseconds, when you compare thirty-three years to millions of years, I'm only gonna be here for a little bit, but the things I'm teaching you will last forever, and that's kind of what I pulled out of it a little bit.
And just as Jesus was rejected, we have to know we'll be rejected too, because he said in the, uh, in the last verse, "But first he must suffer many things and be rejected by this generation." So, you know, if we're gonna live the life following Christ, um, we're gonna suffer some things, and we're gonna be rejected by men, and we have to come to terms with those things, we have to be able to accept that, you know, even if it's, even if it's your child, or your sister, or your brother, or your mother, or father, you know, uh, because he was, he was with, among his family, and they didn't understand either, you know, so, uh, those are the things that we, uh, have to allow, you know, just come to terms with that, everybody's not gonna believe your word, everybody's not gonna take your word, you know, so you have to keep going on.
You're right, Elder Nixon. Um, Mark one, fourteen through fifteen.
After John was put in prison, Jesus went into Galilee proclaiming the good news of God. "The time has come," he said, "the kingdom of God has come near. Repent." Repent and believe the good news.
I know you got something. She just stopped reading the, this, this talk anymore.
No, this is just when John was put into prison. And, uh, Jesus had came into the forefront, uh, proclaiming the good news of God. And, um, he said, and he told the people, he said, it's time. It's time to come to, to repentance in God. It's time to, to, uh, make some changes in your life. There's time to, to, you know, um, make a decision, are you gonna be for God, or, or, you know, are you gonna be for the world? So, uh, he was telling them the kingdom of hea- heaven is at hand. God is offering you the kingdom. And so you have to decide which side of the world you gonna be on, God's world or the kingdom or Satan's kingdom, cuz he's got one too.
Right, right. Sharon? You didn't have nothing, and I thought you raised your hand up. Acts, Acts tw- uh, eight and twelve, please?
Uh, well, when they believed Philip, as he preached the things concerning the kingdom of God in the name of Jesus Christ, both men and women were baptized. Well, I see this as when you preach the word of God, which is, and preach in the name of Jesus, you, uh, the hearts of man would be convicted or the spirit of conviction would take all of them because that's what it's all about. People come to the Lord by hearing his word, confessing it, believing it. So they, they believe the word what Philip preached and they confess with their mouth. And they believe in their heart and confess with their mouth, and they ask, ask to be baptized.
Right. Anybody else? I was waiting on you. He doesn't have anything. You guys got a lot of stuff. You gotta share it. You gotta share it. Especially those, those ones that been there forever.
The ones that I was thinking about when that, when I was reading that scripture is that they, this was the first time that they publicly announced who they was. Like before, it was just for the Jews. And it was just for a certain set. But now that they became baptized and they wanted to do it publicly, and that it's like, I know I believe in God and I want it to be known. And this was like the first of the, um, I don't know if it was first, um, but I was like this was the outward, like I've received something and I've got to share it and I'm gonna show it to everyone, not really in the humblest way is what I got from.
Thank you, Sharon. Um, Sister Betty, I thought you was throwing your hand up there.
Talking too much.
No, you're not.
In, in this story about how this, um, yeah, he thought he could buy, uh,
The power.
Yeah, the power. He thought he could buy the Holy Spirit. Yeah, and, and, um, I was just amazed at how somebody, I guess, uh, if you don't know any better, you, you don't do any better. But he didn't know. So this man Simon was a sorcerer and he thought that, uh, all the people were just amazed at the things he was doing. But then here comes, uh, is it, um, yeah, Philip. And he's baptizing people and he's preaching the gospel and healing people. And this sorcerer thought that he could actually buy the power of the Holy Spirit, cuz he knew his was not true. I mean, it might have, it was a devil's work. But, uh, yeah. It was, what, what he was saying, what they were saying, the sorcerer, it were telling them things, what was going on in their life. Cuz you, you call them sorcerer, palm readers, uh, suit sayers.
Tarot.
Okay, but Peter, Philip came with the natural, the, the, the real thing, the spirit of the Lord, because they were making money off that they're saying they prophesying. It's so, most people doing today's, don't, they prophes- said, Lord, give me a word for you. Come bring that twenty dollars and I got a word, oh, yeah. Mm-hmm. But, and they would tell, they would tell you things because people, even they cut cards and stuff. But when a true man or woman of God show up, the Holy Spirit, it, it gonna be a difference. That's why the people them, they, the word cut them so hard, they couldn't feel the presence of the, they asked to be baptized. It just like with the eunuch, as Philip leave from there and he went, before that I met the eunuch and it was on the chariot, Philip began to read the word to the eunuch. And, cuz the eunuch was like somebody who really didn't believe in God or know about God. And he said, they passing the water, the river, and he said, the eunuch said, stop, see the waters, I wanna be baptized. The word will find you out. The word of God is sharper than a two-edged sword. The word will cut God of people that, I'm telling you, remember I shared that uh, last week, it's about almost two weeks? Ingrid pastor, my niece pastor, she said, and her husband said, she said, let's go to church. She said, boy, he was like that. He said, okay, I'll go. And Pastor Smith didn't even preach. He had a preacher. But when the preacher was finished, he got up and prayed for the people. And he said, hold on, all those of you who traveling this week, come on the line. And he annoyed everyone and prayed for them. My niece husband, Tyrone, was going on that flight to Exuma. And Tyrone said, he noticed the Bahamas said, just keep going straight. And he's like, hey, something isn't right. But thank God they didn't go too far. The pilot announced that there's some difficulties. They have to turn back. But he never said what it was. They can never tell you. They had engine problem. But that's a real spirit of God is. Tyrone said that blew him, that, say, if he never believed there was a God. That's when you know, because how are they gonna come direct? Tell you, you could be going through a situation. And listen here, when the Lord, you pray day and night and, and sometimes God just have somebody to come and declare everything to you and tell you what is going on and, but the doctor say you may have to do this, but God said, no. And they just tell you, and you say, I didn't tell nobody that. It have to be the Lord. I experienced that before walking in the prayer meeting. I didn't know the people. And he said, this, you ma'am, you come here. And this woman read me like a book. You just gotta know the right spirit and be careful, cuz these days and time, some funny things going on in the name of the Lord.
And be prayerful. Be prayerful. When somebody's, when somebody's ministering to you, whatever God gives to them, he's gonna give it to you. Okay, it's not, it's not, it's not gonna be no confusion. You're not gonna have to doubt. None of those things are gonna appear. When the word of God comes from a person that God has touched to give you a word, it's going to settle first in your spirit, okay? And when you, uh, when it's God, God's gonna manifest it, so.
That's true, Elder Nixon. That's happened to me in this service several times. Somebody's come up to me and started telling me stuff and I'm like, nobody knows that but God, cuz me and him have talked about that. Nobody else. Nobody. But, um, we're on He- Hebrews twelve and twenty-eight. Anybody got it? I am, I'll read from Application Study Bible, uh, it says, and it's probably different than, um, King James, therefore, since we are receiving a kingdom that cannot be shaken, let us be thankful and so worship God acceptably, acceptably, with reverence and awe. So, since we have rece- received something that can't be shaken, cuz we know we have victory in him, it tells us to be thankful and there's, we have a lot to be thankful for. And a lot of times, we can't see the things that we're thankful for. I thank God for my brothers and sisters cuz I had somebody come up to me and just started telling me stuff about the things that's happened to me from, uh, cuz they've been watching me until now. And I'm like, all of it is busting, but some of it I could see and some of it I couldn't see. So we need those people in our lives to, uh, to tell us that. But also it said, and we need to worship him with reverence and awe. And you know, like, uh, Sharon said, that's with being, uh, being righteous, living right, um, having the peace of God, the joy. I'm not gonna say I'm, I'm, I'm perfect cuz I'm not. I make mistakes. And I, that's why I continue to re- so I can learn. Because I don't think I'm through learning. I know I'm not. But anybody else? I was waiting on Betty. I just love it when she. I, I do. Go ahead, Sharon.
Scripture when it was saying that we need to really humble and really think about how sovereign and how omnipresent and how mega God is, you know? And like, we need to worship and give that reference. It's like, you know, we was talking about, um, the other week of just being in routinely a praying or being a routine of thinking, I thank you for waking me up, you know? But getting really, I might have been here last, I don't know. But, but just thinking about how really God is, like he's, we can, not only that, he's, we think of him as our Father, okay, but he's also our doctor. He's also our healer. He's our lawyer. He's our ment- I mean, he's so many different things. And I think this scripture just reminds me of, you have to really not put him in a box and just like, I thank you for waking me up, or I thank you for these blessings, but really how amazing and wonderful you really are, like really be in awe of who he is because he has the unshakable kingdom. You know, it's something like we build our world now, you know, before COVID, everybody thought they was cool. You know, you thought the stock market was good, everything, and then Co- and our world was shaken. You know, whether financially, mentally, spiritually, it was shaken for a month. It took you, knocked people off for a little bit. For me, I know, not mentally, where you stand with people, just do you really believe in this medicine? It makes you look at things, look, and you have to think about, this is what we built our world around. But think about how God has given us that's unshakable kingdom in us. And how all that is and not take that for granted and give that reference of really, when we worship him, really acknowledge of who he really is. And not something that just in a box that we just pick up on Tuesdays or Sunday nights or something.
With you saying that too, we don't think, well, I'm not gonna say we, cuz I don't know. A lot of people, uh, they only, like, they think they're secure. They, they get their money, they build up, they build up their earthly things, but they, to people, a lot of people, he's not import- he's not important to them.
Not till they need something.
Where they need to be building.
Not till they need something.
That's right.
Not till they need something because we.
But I, I, I mean, you're right, Elder Nixon, because that's why I came through the door. Because I needed something. You know, I needed him to get in my life and change it. I didn't know exactly what I needed. I'm sorry. I didn't mean that rough.
Uh, we, I, I won't say everybody comes to God when they need something. Sometimes God draws us. Okay? But God wants us all to have him in our lives. And the, the thing that I was thinking of as Sister Sharon was speaking is I have had times where I just thought about not anything significant, maybe something I wanted to eat, something like that. And the Lord supplied it. I didn't have the money. I didn't have no way of getting there if I did have the money. But he supplied it. We take, we take God for granted in so many ways, in so many ways. And God wants not to only do little things in our life. He wants to do great things in our lives. And we stop him from doing what he, what he has,
Right.
he wants to perform, okay? So when we think about things that we go through on the day-to-day, uh, basis in our lives, we make it this great big thing. This great circle, well, what if this, what if this, what if this, what if this? But what if it does? Who do you know? It's like going to the bank. If I know the right person in the bank, I'm gonna get what I need. Okay, that's the same thing with God.
Right.
If I know who God is, I might have to wait, but I'm gonna get what I need.
There you go. And what you saying that you said a little thing like, uh, uh, a, a certain thing to eat at supper, I was telling, I don't know if it was Mother Adams, but I know I told Minister Reggie, Elder Reggie, about me waiting in line for, uh, some food. And I was like, man, I walked in, there was a line. I said, Lord, I hope I don't have to wait long. I'm talking to him. Everywhere I went at lunchtime, I'm talking to him. And do you know, I was right there in a second my food was done. Well, I go to Dollar General to get, uh, some cough medicine for my throat, just something to keep my throat lubricated. And there was a young man up in front of me with one thing in his hand, and I had one thing in my hand, and he said, ma'am, do you, I'm talking to God. I, God, I wish it, you know, cuz in Dollar General, sometime you walk through, you got one person and you're waiting in line. I walked through and this young man asked me, did I wanna go before him? And I looked at him and I said, thank you. But there was a couple that was standing by the door. The, the, the lady went off. She walked away from the door, but he was standing there. As I'm going out, he's smiling at me and saying hi, but he never opened the door for me. There was a lady, a young lady walks in, door slams behind her, and she see me coming and she runs back to the door and opens the door for me. And all the while, I was talking to God. And I was like, you know, my mind was like, ooh, oh. What, you know, I'm gonna keep talking to him all day long. I'm gonna talk to him all day long. And that had happened and I mentioned that to Elder Reggie. And it might not seem like anything to anybody else, but it just opened my eyes up to see the little things that I'm totally missing. Totally missing during the, you know, him doing things and even cuz my mind said it. Man, I wish they would hurry up. I wanna get out of here. I don't wanna stand in line.
But we're, that, but saying that, Mother Brenda, we complain more than we give God thanks.
Well, I thank you.
No, but I'm just saying, on, on, usually on a day-to-day basis, we get in the depression mode, we get in the, I'm, you know, there's so much going on in my life mode. But we never say to God, regardless of what I'm going through, I'm gonna thank you.
Right.
I might have to spend some time by myself, but I'm gonna thank you. Okay, but we, um, murmuring, and this is what comes to mind, murmuring as we go through the valleys of the shadows of death, okay? We murmur complaining like the Israelites didn't have to spend forty years in, in the wilderness. Do we wanna spend forty years in the wilderness because we complaining?
No, but.
You know? So the thing is, is that we gotta change our mindset. Our mindset should be, Lord, I don't know what's happening right now. I don't know why this is happening right now, but I'm gonna thank you that you gonna bring me through it, whatever it may be. And it may not be me personally. It might be a, a, a a family member. It might be a friend. It might be a stranger that we just know a little bit about. You know? But we gotta change our mindset. We gotta stop saying, oh, I wish I didn't have to do this. Oh, I wish I didn't have to do that, you know?
Working on it.
But that goes back to like we was saying in the earlier scriptures, when he gave the disciples the authorities to go out and preach. And like, uh, Mother Brenda was saying, we may not have a pulpit. We may not have, but people are watching. So when you're going through your trials and your tribulations and they see you complaining, they're like, well, I don't wanna serve no God. She complaining, what kinda God I wanna, she, you know, why would they want to? So you are ministering regardless if we know you are or not. And that's why, you know, we have to be thankful. And that's why, you know, we have to be thankful and understand because of how we go through is what the response to things is, how our blessings are, how we get through it, how we, whether it's going to break us down, or we're gonna build from it, or we're gonna be a stronger person, live in that ministry, that purpose that you have. Because with His purpose, even when He told the disciples, like He told them, you're gonna be rejected. You have a purpose, but even with purpose, it's gonna come with pain. And that pain's gonna give you either, it's gonna grow you, but you're gonna have to go through the pain to fulfill your purpose or to fulfill the ministry or whatever He has set for you to do.
And that's why I like in the Bible where God said, I am that I am. And I know sometimes I used to read it, I am that I am. It like just a, a flow of consciousness, but I, the way I read it now is I am that I am. Meaning, Lord, I need a healer. I am a healer. Lord, I need, I am, whatever you need, I am. So, I read it completely different now. I am that I am. Whatever you need, I am what you need. I, I will provide any and everything that you need. I am, fill in the blank. I am whatever you need and, and He'll supply all of our needs, He, He'll take care of us. We just have to remember who He is and give Him His praise. That I read that completely different, especially what I've been going through the past six months. That I am, I'm, I'm that one. For whatever you need in a situation, I'm that one. And what you need for the next situation, I am that one. Whatever you need, I'm, I'm that. For whatever situation you need, I am that. And that, that's how I process that, sorry.
Are you, are you saying that, um, whatever you need, are you, is God, how does, is that God telling you, I am that? Or is that you saying, uh, positive affirmations?
Yes. So, I believe it's both because I have to remind myself, I have to remind myself. I have to, because if I don't, then again, I've got the pieces. But if I'm not reading the instructions, it's not gonna, it's not gonna work, it's not gonna fit together. And I'm, I'm gonna cobble this together, my peace, my joy, and it's all gonna be in my power. But when, when the troubles hit and I need to sit in that chair, it's gonna crumble. And I'm gonna be looking like, God, you left me, like, no, you didn't read the instructions. I didn't leave you, you didn't, you didn't, you didn't put it together right. Now, come on, let's, let's look back at the instruction and let's, let's, let's build it all, let's, let's do what we need to do. But I, I always, I read it now, I am that I am. That thing that you, that, whatever that thing is, I will always be that thing regardless of what you need. Because I'm, I'm, I'm your father, I'm here for you. In this spiritual sense of everything, not just, you know, we're, we're parents in here, right? Our kids need something, we spend the money, we get it. But I can't, I can't give my daughter peace. I can't give my daughter hope. But God can provide those things. So, He is that I am, where I can't, as a parent, I can't even fulfill those. I can't even begin to do that, but God can. He's everything. He is that I am that we need.
See, I'm going through that same thing that you're talking. I've been struggling with this for over a year, that I am that I am. And I see it totally different.
Okay.
I, I mean, not, I'm not criticizing you or anything, but.
I think it's good.
I just know that the journey, everybody in here is on a different journey.
Right.
And so, we're all learning at our own pace. It's sixty-four years, I'll be sixty-four next month. And I am on that same journey that you say I am. So, when you say I am, God says, that's how He described Himself to Moses. He said, I am that I am. So, if God is all-powerful, oh, is that omnipresent, He's all-present, He's all of that. He is the source of everything, invisible and, and visible. Invisible was here before visible. Okay, so if I plug myself, surrender myself to Him and plug myself into I am that I am, so then can I speak affirmations into my life?
Yes.
Coming from God?
Definitely.
And I speak those affirmations, I am happy, I am joyous, I am loved, I am caring. And I, and, and that give you rest. But I'm just saying, I'm finding out that if I, it's hard, it's hard to stay plugged in because you forget and fall back into your humanness.
You gotta plug in every day.
Yes.
And the instru, the instruction said that there's power in the tongue, there's life and death in the tongue.
That's what I'm finna tell you.
So, when you're saying, you gotta, when you're saying those things every day, that's, you're using, you're using the instruction.
I am the Word, Jesus, yes, the Word, the Word, that's where the power lies. The Word, the affirmations.
Yes.
Sister Larissa taught me that. When that thought comes in your mind and tells you that you're, you're nobody, you gotta cast it down with your word.
And that's why I like when Elder said, that is an affirmation and what the Bible said. You know, God says that I am. And then what we read tonight, when Jesus gave the authority to the disciples, the supernatural power. So, you receive God, you have the supernatural power.
To heal.
That I am.
Yes, unrestricted.
Yes.
And healing extends to yourself as well.
Yes. Yeah, um, what you said just now, you opened my thoughts now and going forward. Because that makes a lot of sense and that's powerful, but what happened to me this morning? I should have known that. I went to do some blood work and when I went back to work, I took a beef patty to work for my lunch because normally on Tuesday, Friday, fast or twelve. All of a sudden, I felt so weak and like, and all, all I'm saying, when I did that blood work, it make me weak. And I went and ate that burger and after I ate that burger, it was like that, all these words like, and I felt so, you, I should have known that then to say, I am, because it's my strength. I should, you know, I was like, oh my God, God, I didn't trust you to say you my strength. And how He added that to say, I am, I felt like, I told Mother Brenda too, I said, well, my chest, but I believe all of that was from, I was so guilty. Because see, to me, I said, oh my God, look at the devil trick maybe he did this and after. And I tried to like, say, okay, I'm still concerned, so great, but it's felt like, oh. But I should have just continued and said, Lord, I'm sorry and all that. But anytime that you make a mistake, it's best to acknowledge Him and just say, Lord, help me and move and try to. Because that will keep you so burdened all the rest of the day. I thank you for that, I am.
Not gonna lie, that beef patty smell good in the office. It smell real good.
That is so amazing because even when you go through the world of teaching, like especially in medical, when you're going through, when you're going through stuff medically, they tell you to have a mindset that I'm healed, I'm getting through this, they, and they're in the world. You know, some of these doctors and nurses aren't even believing, some of them don't even believe in God. You just gotta have a positive attitude. So, if the world believes you can have a positive attitude.
That's right.
And you need that to change your body, why can't we as believers, me myself, believe, okay, if they know, that sense enough to know to have a positive attitude, why, I know who God is. You know, I know what you can do. Why can't I say, on this situation, you're gonna make it through just like you did on the previous?
That's right, so true.
Right, Sharon. I am that I am. Uh, Matthew six twenty-five through thirty-four.
Amen.
Betty, that one's yours.
Betty, stop.
Yes, ma'am, you know why? Because it talk about worry, Betty, and you got something on that.
Six twenty-five through thirty-four?
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome.
Okay, I see, but, uh, I don't see, I hear this. Twenty-five through thirty-four. Therefore, I say unto you, do not worry about your life, what you will eat or what you will drink, not about your body and what you will put on it. What you will put on is not life more than food and the body more than clothing? Look at the birds of the air, for they neither sow nor reep nor gather into barns. Yet your heavenly Father feeds them. Are you not of more value than they? Which of you thou worrying can add one cubit to this stature? Hmm. So, why do you worry about clothing? Consider the lily of the field, how they grow, they neither tore nor spin. Am I going too far? And yet I say unto you, that even Solomon in all of his glory was not arrayed like one of these. Now, if God so clothes the grass of the field, which is, which today is and tomorrow is thrown into the oven, will He not much more clothe you, oh, you of little faith? Therefore, do not worry, saying, what shall we eat or what shall we drink or what shall we wear? For after all these things the Gentiles seek, for your heavenly Father knows that you need all of these things. But seek first the kingdom of God and His righteousness and all these things shall be added unto you. Therefore, do not worry about tomorrow. For tomorrow will worry about its own things, sufficient for the day is its own trouble.
Woo, that's powerful. I knew that was, that was just for her because she speaks about worrying all the time. And, and then if you, if you worry, why pray? So, I gave that to her because I know that that was something that she talks about a lot. And, and the word tells us not to be anxious about anything.
Nothing, nothing.
You got something on that? I know you do.
I mean, I think everybody in here.
Everybody do, they can share, they can share.
Just let everybody share because I, I know everybody has, can speak on this one.
Opening the floor up.
If we trust God like we say we do, uh, then what we worry about is not trusting, okay? Um, I know for a lot of years, um, that what, that's what kept me from moving forward in my ministry, okay? Because it was a constant worry about, uh, my son and the things that, what he was doing in his life. But, um, when I finally said, God, you gave me Him, okay? And I know that as you took care of me as I was in the world, you gonna take care of Him, okay? So, when I, when I made that affirmation, that, that statement to God, I said, now I'm moving forward, okay? Because I, there, my worrying hasn't changed nothing, He's doing. My staying up all night and, and, you know, going through what I was going through, all that didn't change nothing. So, why did I do it for so long? You know, I'm serious, you know, we do things for years. And so, um, now that I've come to that point where I can say, hey, you know, Lord, I, I don't know what's gonna happen, but I know that you know. That, that's, that is my, uh, my saying for most of days. Lord, I don't know what's gonna happen, but I know that you know, and I trust you. And so, now, uh, it's to a point that, you know, I, I'm still concerned about Him, you know? I still pray, I still call Him, I still, you know, check up on Him and stuff. But He's not my, I made Him my hindrance. I made Him my hinder, when we worry, we hinder. We hinder the things that God can do. I see God moving in His life now, okay? And I know when God gets through, he gonna be who God called him to be, okay? So, these are the things that we have to watch out for when we get to the point that we're not steadfast, immovable, always abounding in the work of the Lord, okay? Because He had to work on me, so we gotta work on Him, okay? So, um, that's my testimony, you know? We, we tell, we, we worry like we're, like worrying is gonna fix something. Worrying never fixes anything.
Sharon, I see you got the mic. She read.
No, I was just gonna say, like, for me with this, I got, you know, like Elder was saying, we worry. I know myself, I worry about stuff and certain things, but when I finally gave it over, the peace, the, I mean, the sleep, um, just the calmness. And it just lets us know, um, like I've been really working on knowing who God is and Him being within us. And it's, I take it as if I have God in me and I'm worrying about this, then I'm saying that God's not enough. You know? And so, I have to literally look at that each and every time when it, when, um, like, um, Sister Betty was saying, when them thoughts come to your head, about cast them out. When they do come, it's like, God, you are enough. You are whoever, whatever, like they were saying, you are that. So, that's what this really means to me. Why am I gonna worry about yesterday or today or even tomorrow? You know, one of my shared daughters always say, she prays for strength for today. I need today's strength, you know? Because I may not, can't bank on what happened yesterday or what's gonna happen tomorrow, but for today, I need the strength for today. You know, I need your peace for today, you know? And that's just thinking, you know, going back to just honoring God and praising Him and knowing Him and worship Him in awe and just realizing who He really is and understanding who He really is in us. You know, once we give our life to Him and we, um, believe in Him, we have His power. So, we cannot no longer say, we can't do this, we can't, because we have His power. And that's saying, God's not good enough. He's limited on this thing and that's not who He is at all.
Right, and it said in there, did it add anything to our life if we worry? Matter of fact, we know that it does something to us, it takes away from us. It's, that stress causes things to happen in us medically, so we know that. So, He's telling us these things for our own good, for our own good, our health.
Mother Brenda, I wanted to also say, when we're worrying about situations in our life, if we would just take the time, we can see the hand of God each time that we worry, okay? Because as Al was sitting here, I, I, the hand of God, the things that I was concerned about or have been concerned about, I see God's hand. It's not all the time, but I see God's hand, you know? And He's showing me things that I was so concerned about, okay? Because God turns the heart of man, not man. And so, while we pray and while we wait in expectation of what God's gonna do, we ought to be watching the hand of God as He works.
Right, right.
I need to say this before we go any further about, um, I'm just speaking from what I've learned. Sometimes you have to slow yourself down. Sometimes you gotta get out of God's way. You gotta let Him speak to you. I'm so busy talking, 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 I can't hear nothing, God said. You know, I, He's got the whole world in His hand. God is in control, not me. If I could focus on that for a minute, maybe I could straighten some things out. If you ain't got no money in your pocket, that means you need to monitor right now what you spending all your money on. I'm saying, compromise, bring something down, cut something out, throw it away. I had to, I had to bring my whole financial institution that I was running under subjection to the Lord and cast out some things and then get a part-time job to make it work. Sometimes it's you.
Yes.
Don't be blaming the devil for everything, sometimes it's you that's the problem. And so, once you start analyzing your own self and start, uh, putting the Lord first, I told you, you got to sacrifice that, that, that human, that physical man. You got to bring him under subjection because he'll lead you straight there. I'm just saying, I'm not looking at you because I'm talking to you, but.
And, and, and we gotta know, and we gotta know that, that Satan's out to destroy us. That's, that's what he came for. And when we lose focus of God. And when we lose focus of God, then Satan takes the picture. Okay? So which, uh, the word says, uh, choose you this day whom you gonna serve. As for me and my house, I'm gonna serve the Lord, but everybody's got a choice. Okay? So you can't just get up in the morning and say, well, God, you know, I don't feel like you today. What is that? I mean, but that's our mindset sometimes. Sometimes we get up and the only thing we got on our mind and being truthful is health.
And then sometimes when things don't work out for you, you say, I'm gonna kill myself.
I ain't the one.
I mean, not you, but I'm just saying. I, I, that's what I, I, I've been in the crazy house down here because I said, I'm gonna kill myself. Because I didn't, you know, yeah, I didn't know that, uh, and then what make it so bad? When the doctors turned me loose and I was like, I don't know how I'm gonna get home. They, I heard the buzzer and a lady came in, you know her name? She came down and she said, the Lord sent me Betty to get you. And I was like, I knew there was a God because nobody knew I was in there. She didn't know where I was and she took me straight from the crazy house back to Marshall. And, and, and my whole world changed. But that's because I left God out the equation and I was trying to fix it myself and putting a square peg in a round hole. It wasn't gonna never work.
But you know, we do that. We do that as people. And like we was talking about the other day, that's the importance of the fellowship of one of, because just like something that you experience, because you're willing to testify in how God brought you, because somebody watched you. You said, nobody knew, somebody knew something, you know? So somebody seen something and you was able to help someone like, she went through this and she still praised him. You know, this, this is why I always say, we may go through things that are not for us, but for someone that is much weaker, that may not, that may have went ahead and committed suicide because they didn't have the strength. So therefore that's why we have to, you know, be really, and like I said, for me, have to really acknowledge who he is and all that worrying and stressing about this situation. But you brought me out of this and I'm worried about this. You can't do this for my son, my husband, my child, you can't do this? No, why are we limited? And you know, that's, and that's the kind of thing, you know, like you said, we wanna say, it's the devil. No, like you said, we gotta check us. You know, for me, I have to check me. It's not, because the devil's given what he's allowed to do. And a lot of times we give him so much power, give him more power than God. Look, the devil just run my whole day. Hell, you gonna run the day that God gave me, you know? And you gotta sit, and that's the way I have to talk to myself, you know? I really have to come down and be like, you really, really, the devil did? No. And that's, we have to check ourselves first to get us back, like Sister Betty always say, alignment and connected. Like Elder was saying, you have to stay connected. And sometimes different situations come out the other day that loosens that connection. And that's when you have to take that minute, hey, let me get, let me take a five. I gotta get back connected. I need to read a word. I need to call someone or some.
Thank you, Sister Sharon. Um, anybody else? Then we're gonna move on. The central verse, "For the kingdom of God is not meat nor drink, but righteousness and peace and joy in the Holy Ghost." Romans fourteen seventeen, verse seventeen, King James Version. "For the kingdom of God is not a matter of what we eat or drink, but of liv- living a life of goodness and peace and joy in the Holy Spirit." Romans fourteen seventeen, verse seventeen, New Living's translation. The key terms? Joy, a feeling of great pleasure or happiness that comes from success, good fortune, or a sense of well-being. Advent, the coming of Christ as a deity, the Son of God. Kingdom, the eternal kingship of God, the realm in which God willingly, whi- which God's will is fulfilled. The introduction, uh, uh, Mother Adams, could you read the introduction for me?
The kingdom of God is, the kingdom of God is said to be the everlasting realm, where God is sovereign and where Jesus rules forever. The book of Romans tells the believer that the kingdom of God is not meat nor drink. It is not carnal things, nor tangible things, that a person can purchase at a store. But it is the righteousness, it is righteousness, peace and joy. It is those things that can only come from the Holy Spirit. It may include gladness and happiness, which is found in joy. But it is joy unspeakable and full of glory of God, the glory of God. It is a peace that surpasses all and, all human understanding and flows out of the Holy Spirit. It is the Holy Spirit on the inside working on the outside of man. And it is found within the heart of a believer.
Got a little bit more there.
Scripture shows believers that God is the undeniable ruler, the supreme being of the universe. The Lord has established his throne in heaven and his kingdom rules over all. Psalms one hundred and three and nineteen.
Thank you. So as, uh, that says that he's not a tangible thing and Sharon had mentioned that earlier and Sister Betty was talking about the, that he lives with inside of us. It tells us what, um, the things that, uh, is found in him, you know? Um, and that he works inside man. Anybody else before we move on real quick? And I'm gonna give Sharon the first four paragraphs and Mother Shirley the next two, and then Sister Ava the next two.
Discussion, "The kingdom of God is righteousness. It is the quality of being right in God's eyes based on God's laws and standards. Righteousness is a gift from God to believers through Jesus Christ. For God so loved the world that he gave his son, Jesus, to all who believe, who would believe on him and accept him." Christianity.com says that righteousness by human standards is defined as quality of being morally true or justifiable. Justification is made according, according to the conformity of behavior with the regulation or constitution in the context of a nation. In its deeper spiritual meaning, righteousness is the quality of being right in the eyes of God, including character, nature, conscience, attitude, conduct, action, and command, word. Therefore righteousness is based upon God's standard because God is the ultimate law giver. Isaiah thirty-three and twenty-two. Righteousness is a God-centered attribute that cannot be obtained by any human effort. God tells the believers that his ways are not their ways and his thoughts are not their thoughts. There is too much difference between the two. Righteousness is a God thing and it is not about mankind at all. Man cannot measure up to God's righteousness in any way, shape, or form. Man does not have to strive to be righteous. He must accept the will and the mind of God by faith. Works do not attain it because it is a gift from God. Jesus told the believer to pray to his father in heaven and ask him to allow his kingdom to come here on earth as it is in heaven.
I'm gonna ask you to give me, I'm gonna give, uh, you a minute to point out what you see in that, that stood out to you.
The main thing that stood out to me is knowing what, um, the difference is of righteousness. How it just tells you what the world believes it in and that you can't pay for it. Like we was talking about earlier, it's something that is a given. It's nothing that you get and it's something that you receive. And that is something that, um, and it just tells us that the quality of this in God's eye is embattle, embeds the whole body, like your mind, your attitude, what you do, what you say. So that's the main thing that stood out to me.
Thank you, Sharon. Um, the next two was Mother Shirley.
What, what the kingdom brings to a believer is much more than what he can receive here on earth. On earth, believers strive to have food to eat, shelter and clothing, which are just temporal things that will fade away. But the kingdom shall last forever throughout eternity. Righteousness exalts, builds, and sustains because it is everlasting. Jesus advised the believers to seek the kingdom of God before they seek anything else. Most believers are seeking more and most have expectations for their lives to be happy, to succeed professionally and personally, to be healthy, to overcome limits, and to live a better life. Well, Jesus said, "If you seek the kingdom of God, the righteousness, peace, and joy in the Holy Spirit, everything else that you will need will be added to your life." God wants every believer to be happy, complete, and prosperous in every area of their life. God knows that apart from him, the believer's life is incomplete.
And I'll ask you, uh, Mother, I'll give you a little bit to say what stood out to you in those two paragraphs.
It's just that if, if we, uh, you know, believe in God, he's gonna take care, ta- take care of us and, uh, we need to trust, you know? And he will see that we have everything that we need if we trust him.
Amen. Um, who did I give the last? Sister Ava? Mother Ava?
"The kingdom of God is peace, tranquility, harmony, security, prosperity, or well-being. It is a desired status in relationships between God, mankind, and oneself. Peace is so important in the kingdom of God that the believers were told to follow peace with all men and holiness, without which no one shall see the Lord. He told the believers to go after peace, pursue peace, and find peace. For where there is peace, the blessing of the Lord abides. Jesus is the prince of peace. He is what everyone seeking for the kingdom of God needs and desires. Isaiah nine and six. This peace will keep the heart and mind of the believer secure. So as the believer seeks the kingdom of God, he must believe, receive, and embrace in the advent of Jesus Christ. Let the peace of God rule in your heart." Colossians three and fifteen. "The kingdom of God is joy, which is a choice. The believer must choose to be content and satisfied as he goes through trials and negative circumstances that normally would not be a time of joy and contentment. But with the Holy Spirit, the believer receives power to do what seems impossible. The Holy Spirit will give the believer a garment of praise for the spirit of heaviness. The kingdom supplies joy in the midst of sorrow, creating hope when the believer sees no tomorrow. Because the Holy Spirit gives joy, it is not based on human actions. So human actions cannot shake joy out of believers' lives."
Thank you. What stood out in those to you, Sister Ava?
That we should try to be, lead peaceful lives, to follow in God's teachings and to pass on what we learn to anybody we come across.
Thank you. Anybody else there before we get to the questions real quick? We get into them. But I think, uh, like she said, the, the kingdom of God is peace, tranquility, harmony, security, prosperity, and well-being. Because everything he's instructing us to do is for our well-being, for our well-being. Uh, the conclusion, "So as believers, seek the kingdom of God and know that it can be found." If a believer believes in God, as scripture has said, he will find that the kingdom of God is within himself. The Holy Spirit will walk and talk with them. The Holy Spirit will make him, himself known in every possible way. The believer can say, this joy that I have, the world didn't give it to me and the world can't take it away. God is the originator of true joy. So he seeks not food and clothes, but, but a city, the place Jesus calls home, his father's home. The place where builders, builder and maker is God. Whom, whose builder and maker is God. The place where he can spend eternity, the kingdom of God, righteousness, peace, and joy in the Holy Spirit. Question, what is the kingdom of God? Well, we couldn't hear you without the mic.
Righteousness, peace, joy, and the Holy Spirit.
Thank you. Uh, second question, who can have the kingdom of God? Say it, Sharon. Everyone that believes in born again, believers, born again people. What makes up the kingdom of God? Sister Betty? You know? Anybody? What makes up the kingdom of God? Elder, next thing you sitting there like, you know, so you gotta say it. Huh? What's he say? Minister Stephan, what makes up the kingdom of God?
It's joy, peace, um, all those things and joy.
Tranquility, yes. Who, why is righteousness a part of the kingdom?
Because God is righteous.
Amen. Why is joy a choice? Somebody answer that. Why is joy a choice?
Joy, the joy of the Lord is our strength.
Okay. Thank.
You choose God, you choose to have him so that is your choice. You know, um, when I was reading this thing, when we was talking about happiness and I was looking at it, happiness, you have to have something to happen to have happiness. And joy is something that's given from God. So it's not, it could be, like you said, you can have joy and sorrow and you're not gonna be happy. You won't have happiness and sorrow. Happiness can't give you that.
Thank you for going into detail there. I appreciate that.
I wanna say something else too. And I heard, I learned in, um, Sunday School that love was a choice, a conscious, um, active decision. And now I found out that joy is a choice. So when you're going through your trials and your tribulations and you wanna go to bed and pull a cover over your head or you wanna drown in some alcohol or whatever you do to medicate yourself, you don't have to do that because you have a choice to say, I'm gonna leave it with the Lord and I'm gonna go on and be happy regardless of my circumstances.
Okay, Sister Betty, since joy and peace, as you found out that joy and peace is, is, is a choice, all the attributes of God are a choice.
Thank you. I need that, that's one of my prayers. Amen. What's the attributes of God? That's getting off the surface.
Mother Adams, you wanna pray us out?
Father, we thank you this evening for your word and we thank you for joy, peace, love, and righteousness. We thank you, Lord, for this joy that we have. The world didn't give it to us. Father God, as we leave this place, we ask that you go with us. Be our guide, protect us, provide for us. And we thank you, dear God, in the mighty name of Jesus, that you would always continue to stand by us, Lord. We thank you for your divine healing power. We thank you right now, God, for what you're doing in the lives of your people. And we thank you for soul salvation, souls being saved, coming to the kingdom. And God, we thank you for all our families. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
And God, we thank you for all our families. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.